I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming this evening. Would you all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every hand and soul.
We have two board members missing this evening. Eric Pratt is sick and Mike Murray, I believe, is coming in shortly. Oliver is here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Stacy, second?
Seconded.
By Rich. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. On our consent agenda this evening is the check wire transfer disbursement summary, bank reconciliation statements, and the resignations, terminations, and nonrenewals as listed. Next on our agenda is Laker Showcase with Greenwood Elementary. Patrick?
We need to approve the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Haven't done this for a while. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
By Tom. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now you can come up, Patrick.
I'll wait. Good evening. My name is Patrick Glenn. I'm the principal at Greenwood Elementary School. And I'm going to share with you tonight a little bit about Greenwood Showcase. This is the first time I use this SMART technology here with this board, so...
Get one of your students out.
I wanted to begin this evening quickly to show you our new Greenwood logo. And while the interior of the logo hasn't changed, and it's kind of been the signature of Greenwood for many years, because of our Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports Training, or PBIS, which I think Redtail Ridge did a presentation at the showcase, we have embedded our cares, cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control language, kind of our identity of Greenwood, into the language on the outside. It had four other words that were there at one point, and we took it and embedded in the pieces here to represent kind of a new Greenwood that is here. I also want to take some time tonight to share a little bit of perspective from the vision card. We have the luxury of being showcased at the end of the school year when we've collected some data. While we don't have everything collected, we do have some information about, from our kindergarten through third grade, our AIMS web testing. This will be the first row of the elementary vision card, A. And I want to focus in on the fact that we have our, oops, we have our kindergarten assessment data here with phonemic segmentation fluency, which is the measuring of different sounds from our kindergarteners as they break apart words. And that data's over here to your right. And then we have grade one, two, and three, and that is CBMs, and that's a curriculum-based measure. And we measure there what's called oral reading fluency. And some of you have heard me talk about this before a little bit. Kind of has some aha's here to present. When we, when I look at the fact that we have our phonemic segmentation at the level four and level five over here, two years in a row, we have data to kind of show that piece. And you go to level one, you have our reading fluency over here. We find that these two don't predict this very clearly. We have two years of data to kind of prove that. I know from an administrative standpoint, we're going to be looking at that elementary-wise. We need a kindergarten predictor that's going to help us with fluency in the future. So that's kind of a growth area that we need to put into that. If I look at the data here just under the intervention level, we have each year from 2010 to 2011, we have growth, 57 to 61 percent, 52 to 63. And this is the first year in third grade that we've collected this data. Now, these are different cohorts of kids, but there has been some growth due to the fact, I believe, and we believe, of power half hour, or intervention time, that we're providing our most needy students more time to grow. Now, this percentage point is based on the amount of kids that have scored above the 50th percentile. All right. I want to show you a little second aha, and then a third aha with our piece. Let me go back here one moment. Right here, the 61 percent is four percentage points better. So why is that possibly? All of our first, second, and third graders got power half hour if they needed it. But there was one particular class, one of the three teachers here. Here's their winter CBM medium score from their class, pretty equal. Here's the national 50th percentile. In the spring, we have a little bit of a discrepancy here, with this one having more growth. That was the one of the three first grade classrooms that participated in our SMART classroom. Kind of did an action research project this year to see, would actually our students participating in SMART have an effect on their academic growth, which is what the idea is for. This is physical activity to stimulate the lower part of the brainstem to enhance academic growth. We believe it made a difference. Okay. That's now started a conversation that this teacher and this teacher get trained so we can incorporate the SMART classroom with all of our first graders. Kind of a aha. We knew that our intervention made some difference. Let's move forward so that all of our teachers are trained in utilizing that intervention to meet the needs of more kids. I have a second example here. Here's our grade two, 2010. 52 percent of our students scored above the 50th percentile. In grade three, that same cohort, we had 61 percent of our kids score above the 50th percentile. With a 9 percent increase. Okay. Now, why did that happen? So if I go to a different analogy, we've got three classrooms of third grade students. One of them is a three-four combination. I do want to point that out. Here's the 50th percent nationally, 83 words per minute. There was one classroom that was below the national, the 50th percent target rate. That classroom then began to focus on a different PALS class-wide intervention. It's a reading intervention dealing with partners. While the most needy kids also participate in leveled literacy instruction, this one particular class took on the PALS intervention and, from the beginning of the school year, went from 61 percent, which was a 22 percent difference, to 83. The group, 101.5, to 119, which is actually a 2 percent difference, to 121. So we closed the gap between being underperforming to more leveled, to right where we should be at least. We try to use data to help, to help us know whether or not what we're doing is actually making a difference. I know it's one of the things that we've been committed to do, and I've been very passionate about it. And it's been neat this spring to just take a peek at our AIMS web data. Where are we? Where have we gone so far? How do we know we have gone this far? So the data helps us do that. Do you have any questions related to the data piece?
Any questions for the board?
Sure. I'll ask one really wonky question. Whenever I see median, I think of uneven distribution. You look at the distribution of kids to make sure we don't have this tail of kids who will never get up to the median? Do you understand my question?
Yes.
How spread is that distribution?
We have another way of looking at it, Rich, when it comes to the fact that we have every student's data, and we can pinpoint exactly who those students are. This is more of the big picture look, kind of right now. We just, we're finished with this data, and where does it fit according to national percentiles, mostly? One of the things that we've been steered at is to look at that median to determine whether or not, if we're scoring below the median, that whole class needs an intervention to raise the score to where it needs to be. It's kind of a benchmark that we use to do it. So then we take that and we implement the intervention to see if, can we raise that median? But there are looking at the individual kids. We definitely...
Make sure we want to target the individual.
That leveled literary instruction, or RTI framework that we have at the elementary level, really is the focus on those kids. And they're getting a four to one ratio of 30 minutes of additional reading time a day. That's where, you know, it's played a big factor in our growth, is that piece, along with other interventions, SMART being one of them, and then PALS here is another example. So it's just trying to see where the puzzle fits together and where our successes are at.
Thank you.
I do want to spend just a brief moment to talk a little bit about this. This is our healthy snack program. Greenwood is the first elementary in the district to launch a healthy snack cart. This cart and the options that are on it, and it's kind of hard to see, depending on if you're looking at that, but there's apples and baked carrots, cheese, gogurt, granola bars, raisins, and applesauce with spoons. And every student that signs up to be a part of this program has an opportunity once, once a day throughout the entire week, for the rest of the school year, we launched it February 28th, to choose an item off of that cart during their snack day. It's been wildly successful from, from our perspective. How did we come about doing this is kind of the question, though. Our site committee got together about a year and a half ago and said, Patrick, we need to do something for our handful of kids that are coming to school that are hungry. We don't have a breakfast program, and so what options could we, could we explore to do that? Sue Ann, not long after that, said, hey, I'm looking for a school that's interested in launching our SHIP, or to be the recipient of our SHIP grant. And SHIP is statewide health improvement program. It's disseminated, it's money from, the grant money from the state that's disseminated through the counties into the school districts. And I was aware of other school districts that were using it for this type of a program and other things. And I said, I'll take it. I'm interested. Let's go. We had a need at Greenwood to, to kind of fine tune and launch something like this to help provide for our students. So through an assessment piece that we did, a third-party assessment piece, they came in and they helped us measure some goals that we could do with this $5,000 grant money piece. And it got to the point where we, one of them was to launch an option for students. And so we took this past year, since the beginning of the year, built a routine, visited other elementary schools, communicated with some others, just to see how they would, how they did such a program like this, and we were able to, to launch our own. It's been very exciting, and it's been, I think, very successful. So I think is the key here. We started to think about, how can we get some feedback from our parents? And so about two weeks ago, I sent out a survey just to ask them, how's this going for you and your family? Does it meet your needs? How can we improve it type of thing? So I have six of the 12 questions that I asked on, on the survey, just to kind of get a feel out there. The please tell us is to the family, please tell us your level of satisfaction with our healthy snack program. Well, of the 60 or so responses that we got, the majority of them definitely were satisfied from a parent's perspective. What would you guess is your child's level of satisfaction with the snack program? The majority of them said extremely satisfied or satisfied. Have you noticed any changes in your child's food choices or eating habits? And nine of them said yes, with the majority of them saying no. But this is the one that really caught my attention. Do you believe the healthy snack program has increased your child's consumption of fruits and vegetables? 29 or half of them said yes, and I thought that was quite remarkable. We have three fruit and vegetable items on our cart at all times. That's kind of our commitment. And it's been anywhere from apples to pears, to oranges, to baby carrots have been kind of the focus right now. We've been looking at other options, and we need to kind of expand that this summer and see where can we, at a reasonable cost, get access to more vegetables that we could distribute to our students. So that was one of the suggestions that was for us on the survey, too. What are some things that you like about the healthy snack program? Parents said food choices, cost. It only costs 28 cents an item. That's what we figured it out to be at the beginning of the year, and we then charged our families $18 from February 28th to the end of the year to participate. Next year will probably be in the range between, I'm going to say $45 to $55, one flat fee. You don't pay per item, you just, you're in the program or you're not. And there are scholarships available. We want to make sure that we target and support all of our students. The biggest thing here, that is the convenience. We had about 60 parents that participated in the survey, and that's been, I think, the biggest impact I see from a parent's perspective, is I don't have to pack my child's snack anymore. It's going to be there at school, and I know that it's going to be a great choice. And for those students that maybe have allergies, it's all peanut-free. That's been another one of our commitments, so. Do you plan to continue or participate in the healthy snack program? 56, 55 out of 56 said yes, and I'm like, okay, that's great. I expect us that we'll have a, an even better program next year as we move forward, so. It's been kind of interesting, because Greenwood kind of moved forward with the elimination or the change of the birthday treat concept. We moved away from the food item to make a donation to your library with a book in honor of your student concept. And this has really kind of helped, been a nice complimentary event at Greenwood, to support healthy eating and good habits with kids. And it's something that is kind of our target, our goal, to be able to do that, is to really encompass that. So, thanks for allowing me to share. Entertain any questions that you have about our program.
I just would talk about the dollars that the SHIP grant gave you and how you spent them.
Great idea. We received $5,000, and a portion of those, those funds, we needed to have a dedicated refrigerator space to make this happen. And so we had to purchase our own refrigerator to use for that. Greenwood does not have the capacity to house the, the things that we need to be able to do that with our small, with our small refrigeration space. We had to have some electrical, people come in and put dedicated lines for the refrigerator. That had to be, we had some storage pieces that we had to purchase to make sure we kept things put away. We don't want to attract anything. And then we have, we had to find the cart, we had to put the cart. And some of the funds, just as a startup funds, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our kids this year. We have some things in the work to help financially sustain this for the future, and we're going to be able to do that now. Just to, if there's students that can't participate, there's going to be scholarship dollars for them to be able to participate. That's kind of where this conversation started. We have a group of kids that need some support. We're going to give it to them. We're going to find a way to do it.
Tom?
Have the other elementary schools talk to you about wanting to start something similar to this?
You know, we've had a few preliminary conversations with it. I know from, from a SHIP grant perspective, that as soon as the legislature is done, we'll know whether or not there's going to be other grants available for other schools to participate from that perspective. So I know there's kind of a waiting game going on right now. We've definitely heard that from our SHIP people. You're just going to have to, going to have to hang on. I think when and if that happens, we might have more conversation. I've had two schools in particular that have asked about the details involved around it, so. Thank you. Tom?
Patrick, I mean, what percent of people are participating?
We have two-thirds of our student population are participating right now.
Okay.
And I anticipate that that's going to go up. We don't have our kindergartners in the group right now. They had already had a program that they, have a shared snack program since the beginning of the year, and they had inventory, so we weren't going to interrupt that program. But they'll all be invited to participate next year. And it's in the primary grades that the kids are most interested, and so as those kids start, I would assume, I'm assuming that they're going to stay. This routine's going to be embedded with their family. They're going to be a part of it. I know Jordan Elementary had 90 percent of their students that were participating when we went to visit. They've had it for five or six years, I think.
And then to step back, the SMART room that you have with the three teachers, have both been trained now, or where do we stand on that?
We have just received a grant from the district staff development group to send five more Greenwood students, teachers, to be trained this summer. And it's funny that you ask. We just put that information together this week, and we intend to get that, that'll happen in July, to launch it for the rest of our primary. And there'll be a kindergarten teacher in that, too, as well as some support staff. We're excited about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks.
Very interesting. Next, we have Laker Pride. And this evening, we would like to recognize a local prior Laker man, Steve Nolan, if you would come forward.
Whoa.
Hi.
Just getting the microphone unmuted here. Are we, are we set to go?
Yep.
So the camera has to see us. Welcome, Steve. A 1983 graduate of Karle Lake High School, who, as a senior in high school, was diagnosed with Crohn's disease.
At the age of 17.
At the age of 17, not a fun experience for him.
No, it wasn't. It was a life-changing experience. I thought it was going to be the end of the world, but it ended up being a very growing experience for me, and I didn't let it make me quit life. I just persevered and, you know, I have to give my, some of my teachers back in school. I remember Mr. Dodge had us do a book report on, on a story, and I did Walk Across America. And that inspired me, because I thought, boy, what courage the guy had to just walk out of his house and go across the country. And I want to thank my dad also for, he got me started running, and we ran marathons. We've run about over 40 between the two of us.
Smart.
So. And then Terry Hitchcock, who's also in the back. I had read about him and saw him on the news back in 96. He ran from St. Paul to Atlanta. And I just saw him last summer at the farmer's market, and I read his book, and I said, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to run across the United States. And then I have Crohn's disease, so I thought, what better cause?
Right.
So, and I want to thank my mom.
I think maybe you should all come up here.
Yeah. And I have another friend here, Lynn Kudelik, who's been a good friend. So if you guys all want to come up.
Sure.
Sure.
I know you don't want to, but it'll be fine. We'll make it painless.
Terry said he wanted to be invisible. I think the whole world knows about you.
While they're coming up, so as a result, you decided not to go anything small here. You were going to start small. You're going to start big.
Yep.
So you flew out to Seattle.
Yeah, it was over, you know, it was one thing to plan, plan the whole thing. But then when I, when I flew out to Seattle, it was a very overwhelming experience, because I didn't have a game plan. And I, I spent the first night in the airport till 5:00 in the morning, and then took the subway into Seattle. And then I stayed at a hostel that night, and then, and I, I want to thank my parents, because my dad was very good at navigating the whole journey, and my mom was intricate in getting me a roof over my head every night.
So did they come along?
No. I went solo. I started out with a backpack for five days, and then I, it was killing me, so I ended up getting a little stroller. And bungee-coored that on there, and then I, it was a lot easier after that point. And then after about two weeks, I, I started building confidence that I could, I could make it. At first, I was kind of living in, in a lot of fear. Yep, but...
And so what was, what was your end, end result? You started in Seattle, you ended in?
Key Largo, Florida.
How many miles?
It was 3,717.
Wow. In how many days?
100 days. And at the halfway point, I was about two days behind schedule. My dad ended up figuring out a way where I could, I could make it in 100 days. So it was, it was a fun experience, and we all grew pretty close from it.
It's just really amazing. Terry, you were his inspiration.
Yep.
One of them.
Yep.
One of them.
There was that Terry Fox, who was a, who ran across Canada back in, oh, it was in the 70s, and he was missing part of his leg. He ended up dying, but he was an inspiration, Terry Hitchcock. I remember being about 30 years old and, and reading about you, and I was like, oh, I should have done that.
And here you've done it. Now you've got a new plan.
Yeah, I'm going to run the fans 24-hour run, and I'm hoping to do over 100 miles. And then next year, I was, I was thinking about trying to set the world's record.
And what would that be?
It would be 67 miles a day for 42 days.
Oh, cool. That is quite impressive, and we are very proud to call you a Laker.
Thank you very much, Sue.
And very proud to have, have you come here tonight and be a part of us. Just a little something for you to, to let you know that we are very, very proud of you and your accomplishments. And just a few weeks ago, you were recognized by Representative John Klein.
Yeah.
At his Star of the North Award event. And just know that we're all back here in Karle Lake rooting you on, and wish you best of luck, and best of luck with continuing to live life fully.
Thank you very much. And thank you all the board, also.
Right. And let's just introduce these people. This is...
Terry Hitchcock.
Terry Hitchcock.
Mary Nolan.
I'm the mom.
Lynn Kudelik.
Lynn Kudelik.
Gary Nolan.
Just so they know who these faces are, as they see them on TV, since we're live-streaming. Thank you all for being here. And for being here, I appreciate it.
And a little bit on the other end of the spectrum, we have another young man who is soon to graduate from Karle Lake High School. And tonight is his last board meeting. He's been very dedicated in coming. I don't know that you missed more than maybe one, and you had something going on at school when you missed.
It was two.
Okay. But both of them were school events, I believe. So we appreciate your input, and you've done a great job for us, and we look forward to the, the next person to serve in your, in your place. So I have a Laker pride for you, and I believe your presence for being such a good attendee is your nameplate. Okay. Now we're at a point in our agenda that we have open forum. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on an item that's not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to personnel. May I?
All right. Good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Grover. First, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Tom, second?
Second.
By Stacy, any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Leaves?
And next, I present the following leaves of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the leaves of absence?
So moved.
By Mike, second. By Rich, any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Resolution for discontinuing and reducing teacher positions.
And before I present the next two agenda items, I'd just like to briefly explain that these two agenda items are coming forward this week. A similar item came forward two weeks ago at our previous board meeting. These are coming forward this week because the resolution that we passed two weeks ago satisfied our contractual obligations with the collective bargaining agreement that we have between the district and the Karle Lake Savage Area Educators Association. That said, there was a concern that it might not have satisfied all of our statutory grounds, and so that's why these two resolutions are coming before the board tonight, is to make sure that we've satisfied all the statutory requirements for these reductions. So first, we'll start with the resolution. I'm presenting the resolution discontinuing and reducing teaching positions.
Do I have a motion to accept approval of resolution discontinuing and reducing teaching positions?
So moved.
By Tom, second?
I'll second it.
By Mike, any comments or questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote. Todd?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
That motion carries six zero. And the next resolution?
The next resolution that I'm presenting is the resolution proposing to place teachers on unrequested leave of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution proposing to place teachers on unrequested leave of absence?
So moved.
By Rich, second?
Second.
By Stacy, any comments or questions? This also is a roll call vote. Todd?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries six-zero also. Um, approval of job descriptions.
And next, we have three job descriptions coming forward, um, under the technology department, uh, two of which are new and one has been redone. And Jeff Holmberg is willing to speak to any of those changes if there are any questions. So, I present the following job descriptions.
Do I have a motion to accept the job descriptions?
I'll move.
I'm sorry. Todd? Second?
Second.
By Tom? Comments or questions?
I have a few questions. Do you have...
Rich?
Um, which ones are the new ones and which ones are the old ones?
In the job descriptions that are presented before you, uh, there is, there's one position that is new, and that's the network systems technician. And then, the data system specialists and technology field technicians are revisions, are revised job descriptions. As a clarification.
Okay, and why are there reasons?
As part of the, there are several reasons. As part of the restructure, if you'd like can go through each one.
Sure.
If that, if that would make sense.
That would help me. Thank you.
In looking at the data systems specialist, we had, uh, that, that is part of our restructure moving forward. Um, at the last board meeting, we did have a resignation of the, of the employee that was currently in that position. In that resignation, we took it as an opportunity to go through and reevaluate that job description like we do most job descriptions. Um, one key piece that we looked at, um, or revision in that is looking at multiple operating systems, uh, primarily the data, uh, the data specialist. It was a data, database system specialist before, where it was primarily our district's financial and business operations. The key change to this is that, as a district, we started having preliminary discussions on looking at student informational systems and most particularly, a data warehouse. And so, as we move forward and start investigating those options, we included that as part of this, uh, job description revision, uh, so that as that responsibility, as we move forward with that, those responsibilities would rest with this person and we're seeking somebody who has knowledge in student informational system.
Okay.
On the second one, uh, the network systems technician, this is a new position. Um, as I shared with you during the restructure plan, this, presently, we have one network specialist. In a district this size, that's a very lean, um, model to have one person devoted to our network. And so, in looking at part of this restructure, we needed to add someone else to take on some of those responsibilities. As a district, we've grown. We've added additional buildings. Our network has increased. Uh, we're moving forward with new data network switches, as well as a new phone system. And so, looking at the job description for this person, it includes, uh, the technical expertise in the network, um, the router, servers, uh, and IP management, but also, um, supporting our IP telephones for staff moving forward once that project is completed, as well as maintaining and supporting in-house and live-stream video systems, which is something that the technology department has not had in the past.
Okay.
On the field technician, um, job description, this is a revision from our technology support. There are a couple areas where this is different. This is not a, a massive overhaul of this position, but what it does reflect is that this is a position that has, uh, field technical expertise and reflects district support to all buildings and users. The technology support description in the past had people assigned to buildings. And so, we're looking for, uh, a different level of, a different level of, of support for our district moving forward. These are field technicians. They will be out in all buildings and working with all staff. Um, over the past several years, we have deployed several, uh, different projects with hardware, software. And coming up shortly here is curriculum, or web-based curriculum, uh, applications. In the qualifications, uh, we've also added the supporting multiple operating systems and web-based applications, which are different than the previous job description of the technology support. And the third component of this job description is our previous tech support had job descrip, had, uh, days of, contract days that had differing levels. The contracts for these technical positions will be two-hundred days. In having a two-hundred day contract, this will allow the district and, to do some maintenance prior to school starting, as well as once the school year ends. And if there are any projects in the summer during the course of the school year, it allows the flexibility in order to make sure that those proj, we have the support on hand to, to conduct those projects. Presently, many of the contracts are currently, um, anywhere from the one-hundred-and-seventy-one to one-hundred-and-seventy-three day range, which is limiting because those, typically those days are aligned to student contact days. And so, we, we've run into problems in the past, uh, being able to respond to maintenance and do some work on our current hardware and software and provide the, the current updates when we have teachers and students, uh, in class.
And those existing positions, is that in the contract, one-hundred-and-seventy days?
The existing, in the existing contract, they're typically a one-hundred-and-eighty-five day contract.
Okay.
But over the last several years through budget reduction, those, those numbers of days have been diminished.
I guess my major concern is we have a, a good amount of staff right now on, that have a good skill set that matches these. Are these folks going to be given preference? Are existing personnel given preference for these positions?
For the positions moving forward for our, our, our organizational chart, there will be five positions we'll be posting for. Four field techs and the network server tech, or network systems technician. I've met with each of the technology, uh, members who's been affected. And if they have applied, I have assured them that they will be offered a, uh, interview for those positions.
But there's no assurance that they will maintain their job, though?
No.
Tom?
Has this been gone through with our new technology coordinator? And he's seen on, he has seen all this and is in agreement with it?
Over the last several weeks since the, the hire of Marcus Malazo, he and I have been working on this. We've gone through each of these job descriptions. He's provided, uh, revisions and working with, uh, Mr. Mons on, uh, making sure that these are up to snuff moving forward. He's also on board with our technology restructure and organizational chart moving forward.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess my concern is the qualifications don't seem to be that extreme for our existing staff members. I, I was curious if we can put some wording in there that any one of our existing field technicians who are already employed by the district, who know the district, can keep that position if they agree to go to this higher number of days? Right? On the four?
I believe they're all able to apply.
They're all, they're all fall aside to apply.
There's no guarantee, though?
No.
Any other comments or questions?
I would only say that we, we really need to have the, the highest quality technician we can. And we have some of those that perhaps will apply for those positions. And certainly we'll, you know, we'll get, we'll give them our highest consideration. But at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to hire the very best person for each of these positions. Up until this point, we've had a tech at each and every building. We're reducing that down to four. So, they have to be able to, be able to go out to every site and be able to seamlessly work, uh, to help make sure that our, uh, instructional technology is up to par and ready to go. So, that will be our highest, our highest benchmark. And certainly, uh, we hope that there'll be a few that'll be able to stay with us.
Any other questions or comments?
Jeff, um, the model that this is, I mean, other districts, I'm assuming, have a similar model?
They do.
And it's been successful as far as service?
Everything that I have in, in my communication to other districts, uh, this is a successful model for them. It's a successful, uh, job description for them and being able to provide support, not necessarily assigning techs to buildings. Um, and so, I, I haven't received anything that would indicate that there would be a problem. Uh, Mr. Malazo, who's also had experience in other districts as a technology coordinator, has had similar experience and recognizes that this is a good model. Um, additionally, uh, with the current staffing that's being proposed in the organizational chart, in comparison to other districts our size, would certainly not indicate that we are lacking in personnel to provide support to our users.
Any other questions?
Just one other comment that we, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Rich. Just that we, uh, are doing this at no additional cost. This is all being done as cost neutral, beginning with the hiring of a coordinator through the restructure of the entire department by just reconfiguring how we're using and spending those dollars. And, I'm sorry, Rich, you...
No, I just wanted to say thank you to Jeff for all his answers.
I think I have a motion in a second. Um, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. And your last one, ma'am?
All right. And last, I present, uh, the agreement between the district and the PLSPA, the Principal's Bargaining Unit, um, for the twenty-twelve through twenty, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-ten through twenty-twelve school years. And I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the principal's agreement for two thousand ten, twelve?
So moved.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Todd? Um, any comments or questions? And this contract is within the parameters that we've set as a board, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, no other comments? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Thank you, ma'am. Um, we have no old business this evening, so we'll move on to new business. And we have a presentation by DSI Partnership and Kira.
All right. I, um, would like to introduce Dave Domek. He is, um, the representative from DSI that Jim and I have been working with as we have progressed in our partnership with them. And just here at the end of the school year, once again, to provide an update and an overview of the partnership, the goals that we have, um, met and a little glimpse into what we're looking forward into the future. Um, as always, our ultimate goal is to becoming environmentally proactive, like rethinking, reusing, reducing and recycling, um, to increase our knowledge of behaviors and attitudes that promote sustainable behaviors and always, uh, to deliver a cost reduction to the school district as well.
If you're not aware of it, what we did when we started the, the garbage and recycling with the district is, we actually created a, a fun little contest. We started with getting some way of, uh, giving the kids, uh, an award for doing a great job. So, what we did is, uh, we worked with the staff and we created, uh, a contest where we were able to take your solid waste, garbage. We were able to take your recycling and turn it into actually data. Then what we did is we also created a contest off of that and you'll see some of those awards tonight, but where we actually, uh, created a grant for your school, a small grant. And then, we also created a scholarship for a, a candidate of, uh, the school's choice or the, the, uh, the district's choice. And then, as well as last but not least, the elementary school who won the contest actually gets a, a ice cream party. So, what we did was we took your total garbage and we were able to get industry standards on what a cart weighs. So, we were able to take all your recyclables and then we put those into a point system. And then, what our drivers actually do is they will keep track of those weights. Those get pushed back into a computer system that tallies those and then you'll see tonight who the winner is.
The chart, uh, in front of you showcases what Dave was just talking about. And I think that it aligns itself well with a recent study that the MPCA published this past October, highlighting that, um, schools need to be doing more to recycle. And different facts that came out of that study. Over seventy-eight percent of school waste could be diverted from the trash to organics composting and container paper recycling collection programs. Fifty percent of school waste could be managed via organics. And the single most common material generated by schools was food waste, generating, uh, a total of twenty-four percent, with a second being recyclable paper at twenty-three percent. And what Dave did and the staff at DSI, they would send me this every few months. Um, and I would send it on to the environmental committees and educate and work with the junior naturalists and the ECO team kids at the high school to give a little inspiration, pep talk, whatever they might need to increase their numbers and work, um, towards this. And, um, so you can tell it has the number of students, the, um, pounds recycled per month, the trash thrown away per month, total waste, the percentage recycled, pounds per student that they recycled, and then pounds per trash. Um, the high school, once again, was definitely by far above all other schools, which is fantastic. Um, last year, we started off the school year, I believe, at twenty-seven percent in September and October. And, um, with some reconfiguring, um, of, of spending two days at the high school with ECO team and all the staff, we're at workshops and being worn out by their energy, um, we reconfigured what the garbage cans looked like and, and provided science from DSI to provide the educational efforts. And our high school is recycling fifty-three percent of what they, um, throw away, up from forty-five percent from last year. What this document does not show is the food waste. And, uh, on a low, um, guesstimate, our guesstimate for the district is about thirteen tons that we are, um, getting, giving to pigs at this current time. Um, the middle schools, um, we're still working on. Uh, Hidden Oaks is up. Um, actually, Hidden Oaks is maintaining at ten percent. And Twin Oaks is up from, uh, eleven percent last year to thirteen percent. At the elementary level, all the elementaries did quite well, um, which is always fantastic to see. Red Tail Ridge increased from eighteen percent to twenty-eight percent. Jeffers Pond increased from nineteen percent to thirty-three percent. And Glendale, which is kind of hard to see there, increased from fifteen percent to seventeen percent. Rainwood maintained at thirty-one percent, um, which was awesome last year. And so, it's great to see they're continuing, doing so well. Um, they were our winners last year and received, um, the ice cream party, which the kids thought was the best thing ever. Uh, at Five Hocks, they increased from twenty-two percent last year, um, to twenty-nine percent this year. Westwood is up from thirteen percent last year to twenty-one percent this year. And then, Edgewood also had a pretty significant jump from nine percent last year of their total, um, waste thrown away, was recycled to twenty-two percent this year, which is definitely what we wanna see. Um, speaking from a financial standpoint, financially, when things are recycled, we don't get charged the tipping fee. We don't get charged the tax, blah, blah, blah.
This is why we do this. Um, this is kind of a fun way of taking, we take all the data and we actually can, we get conversions from the government and state level, on the federal level, of different conversions from tons to values. And this year, your school district saved, uh, twelve hundred trees. It, uh, if you look through the different types of recyclables, again, we, uh, saved more or less between the three different, or four different types of materials, uh, the kilowatt hours of electricity that it takes in energy to make those items if they were to make them new or virgin. So, these are the things that make this really, really, uh, exciting for, for all of us. For all of us to take our kids, bring it back to our parent, their parents, and learn how to, I guess, change our habits. So, um, that's the neat thing about it. The other part that was kind of fun for Kara and I was, it was kind of a horse race. We were watching the schools' percentages go up and down and up and down. And it was, uh, it was fun to watch that. So, um, kind of the overall goal is the awareness to raise for the kids to bring back through when, as they grow up and get older. If you look at the high school, for example, they've instilled that and they're, they're at fifty-three percent. Uh, the behaviors and attitudes, that's what it's all about, folks. It's, it's, that is what we are changing. Uh, the natural resources that we are preserving just by the twelve hundred trees that we saved, the district does save money as well through the fact that we're recycling. Recycling is not, is not a taxable item and it's more or less not a disposal cost as much as it's just, it's recycling. It's, it's putting back into the environment. So, overall, it's just a win-win-win for everyone. So, I am pleased to... Present first of all... Okay, all right. We'll do Jeffers Pond. Um, Jeffers Pond, I'd like to congratulate them. They have won the contest officially. So, we will be, uh, the, the last week of school, we'll be actually coming out with covers and presenting an ice cream social to them. And they have a blast. And what we usually do is we have a little pep rally in the gym and we congratulate them and there's screams and yells and, "Where's the ice cream?" That's the kind of thing. So, I, I congratulate Jeffers Pond in, in their, their winning of this, uh, ice cream social.
And then, I would like to recognize, um, Kevin Ta. Kevin, I have known Kevin since he has been in elementary school. So, it is fantastic for me to, um, acknowledge him today. And, um, Kevin was one of the founding members of the high school ECO team. And the criteria for this scholarship is for them to reflect back upon their science and environmental classes and activities. And they need to be going into a science or environmentally-focused field. And so, they had just been in essay. Of course, they have to do some work. So, I'm gonna ask for Kevin to read the last little snippet because, um, article, Sue and I were just talking about this, came out in the CNN talking about how high schools are not preparing their students adequately for college science and math courses. And in rereading Kevin's, um, essay today, I thought this last paragraph hit our school as well.
Good evening. Okay. "Science courses at Prairie Lake have greatly inspired me to try hard and keep on climbing up the steep hill of challenges that have put, been put in my way. The skills I have attained on the journey in high school will only boost me high above these obstacles. I don't think I would be the person I am today without all these classes. I am a bird within a cage with its potential locked away. But thanks to Prairie Lake High School, they have opened up the cage and allowed me to roam free in the beautiful world."
roam free in the beautiful world. Let me change the world, one person at a time."
So you can see why Kevin is very deserving of this, and two years ago, when we had our Field and Leadership Day at McCall Pond, if you've ever been around their area, they have signs describing the different phthalates. And when Kevin was a fifth grader, they, the art teacher there, did the artwork with them and helped them research, and Kevin's artwork is all over. He helped to design the high school ECO team, and so I am thankful that he will remain here a little bit, too, so.
So Kevin, we'd like to officially congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
And there's your check, and do well. One thing that we have, Dick Sanitation, we've got a little mission statement for you, okay?
Okay.
That mission state is to go blue and live green, okay? That's as simple as it is. Go blue and live green. So you'll see that more and more, I want you to do that for me, okay?
Okay.
Good luck to you in all your endeavors.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kevin. A little glimpse into what's ahead, the last school board meeting, I came to you with a proposal for Green Corps staff member, a little update for that, we did make it pass the first cut, which is fantastic, and I had a phone interview with them last week, and so we'll see with anticipation as to whether or not we have a staff member to help us. We're converting our recycling program, now we're in the preliminary stages and conversations with Midwakka and Sioux, as I referenced last time, and doing the composting, and traveling out that way today, we have sign up, so you can see where their organics facility is, just past the YMCA. So in working with DSI, the conversations that we've had in moving forward into the future, implementing an aggressive organics composting program to help reduce our waste even more so, redesigning the usage of waste and recycling containers both in and outside of the school. So inside the school, the containers, the configuration will look a little bit different, as it will outside of the school. Communicating results on a more timely basis so that the students, so maybe more frequently, maybe, you know, maybe once a month isn't enough, so just as more frequent reminders, and developing a program that increases recycling opportunities, still decreases our waste, and increases opportunities for preserving natural resources, and decreases costs related to the waste. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, Dave or I, would be happy to address those.
Any questions from the board?
I know I tried to use, I'm Savage resident, tried to use Midwakka and Sioux composting facility, they don't allow it for Savage residents. Is the whole district, even our schools in Savage, be able to?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Tom?
You said that, you know, with the recycling and all that, you know, we have saved quite a few dollars. Do you have any idea what the savings is?
Not at this time, because we would need to figure out the tipping fees and all those different things. My guess is that after we give it a whirl the first month or so, we would come back to the table and discuss it, if other changes are needed. If you remember back six years ago, when we first started really focusing on recycling, Dan and I worked a lot with the custodial staff, the principals, and other teachers to reconfigure what the pickups looked like. You know, we realized as we were recycling, as we were recycling more, we didn't need to have as many waste pickups. And so our savings was, it changed, it fluxed a lot every month, and so at the end of the year, we had a stronger number for that.
If you consider all the weight that you're recycling, and you were to landfill that and pay the disposal costs, because that's really how, we're a transporter, we pay disposal costs, that in itself, especially like with the high school, is huge. That's fifty percent of your savings, you could really, really calculate.
The first year, when, six years ago, when we shifted, because we used to have waste pickups every month, or excuse me, every day, and then when we moved them to three times a week, it reduced the cost by over sixteen thousand dollars, so.
Well, I saw a screen.
I just had a question on the middle schools, I noticed their numbers were a little low, and I have one of them, so I understand, but is there any ideas as to how we can kind of get them more engaged in the plan?
That is the winning ticket, gold ticket thing. I've been working a lot with the staff, we have some strong members in each of the different buildings, it's that age, that has a lot to do with it, and looking at different research and trends and patterns and a whole historical perspective.
Is there an ECO team there?
Yes.
Oh, there is, okay.
Yes, that, see, yeah. We, in the elementaries, it goes from over a hundred kids wanting to do it, if maybe we can get ten in the middle, and then back up to fifty, seventy at the high school. So it's...
Unique group.
It's a unique group.
If I can chime in, I think the organics, when we get into that scenario, the middle schools do much better at the organic, so what's going to happen is the horse race will change again, it'll be interesting to see, but that will help that.
And I mean really, too, when we shift into their organics compo, organics focus, the only thing that we'll have is waste in the schools is soft plastics and the soft aluminums, so wrappers from like granola bars or suplex bags, because the composting will be able to take the paper towels and such, too.
Mike?
Staying with the middle schools, and I know you flipped through the numbers pretty quick, but I guess what jumped out at me is, I think even in some cases, either Twin Oaks or Hidden Oaks had more total waste than the high school, and for sure, if you add those two together, and I know it's two buildings, but it's still only three grade levels of kids versus four at the high school, so what's driving all of the waste in our two buildings? That just seems kind of odd to me.
It is something that we've looked at, we started looking at it last year, and looking at realizing that, actually, in the middle schools, this is something that the teachers came up with, in that they do a lot more project-based instruction, where the kids have the three thing, science, like science projects, tri-fold things, so they think maybe that's part of it. The other thing is at the high school, there's a compactor, and so that's why it's always a steady nine thousand for that, and so it compacts it a little more, but there is more waste that's generated in the middle schools than there is at any other building. And I don't know necessarily lots of it, there's a lot of it in the food. Waste part, you know, it's a transition from the elementary school where things are put on their tray and they need to eat them, in the middle school, there's some choice, and sitting and hanging out in the middle school lunchrooms and things, it's just a flex, and it depends on the day, and in the high school, they eat everything, so nothing is thrown away. You know, maybe they've mastered the element of choice by then, so I don't know. That's what I should do my dissertation on, actually. That would be a good one.
Figure out middle school.
Before we go, I guess one thing that we did want to do, Dick Sanitation, really, Cara and staff on the environmental, we're excited to keep this going and build the momentum and have fun with the contests and so forth, we're excited for the, this next year in implementing organics, it's going to be a challenge, but we're up for the challenge. So we're presenting this check to, for five hundred dollars, to Cara and the school district for a good job, well done, and we look forward to another great year of getting the middle schools up to where they're supposed to be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I'd just like to thank you both for your work, and the partnership's great, you're both pretty excited about it and energetic, and that's great.
It is.
It's contagious, so, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to purchase order requests.
Good evening, school board and Dr. Grover. This year, we're asking that the school board approve from the beginning of issuing our 2011 and 12 purchase orders for supplies that are needed prior to our preliminary budget being approved. Many of our teachers have already put in their requests for their supplies and those things for next year, and they'll be leaving soon, and our preliminary budget will not be approved, and in order to do, to place their orders, we need to do that prior to the approval of the preliminary budget. Just as a reminder that we do this every year, and also that they will not be paid prior to July one, so those bills will come after July one, and it will be paid after July one in next year's budget.
Do I have a motion to accept the purchase order request for 2011-12?
So moved.
By Rich?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
By Tom? Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Thank you. And Julie, you're up again?
Yes, I am. I would like to talk a little bit about our medical plan rates for 2011 and 12. We have had quite a few discussions, Matt Mons and myself, about our renewal of our district's health insurance, and we have gone through the process of working with the co-op in securing a zero percent increase for 2011 and 12, and a minimum of five percent for 12-13. However, one of the things that we really looked at was our fixed costs in continuing our relationship with the co-op and Blue Cross Blue Shield. And going through some of those investigations, what we've done is really look at the costs of what our premium, what our actual claims are, what our fixed costs are, and if there was a way that we could really look at saving some money in the future while offering the same plans that we are currently offering to our staff. And one of the ways that we can do that is possibly through self-insurance. Our district is large enough at this point, with over seven thousand students and nine hundred staff members, that we, that is something that financially, that we would be able to assume that risk. I do have Al Hofstadt here from Corporate Health, and also Dave Thielen from Preferred One, to just go through a short discussion about this, and if you have questions after you, certainly, welcome to ask.
Thank you. My name's Al Hofstadt, I'm the vice president of Corporate Health Systems, and we were engaged in conversations to help analyze your current Blue Cross Blue Shield plan through the co-op, as well as some other self-funded options, and one primarily that we're focused on now is with Preferred One. And as Julie alluded to, the primary focus is on the fixed costs of your health plan, and that's made up of some of the withholdings that Blue Cross and the co-op take from the plan to fund their reserves, as well as significantly reduced admin fees. And as it sits right now, as the analysis has shown, it's about roughly eight hundred thousand dollars a year of savings, which accounts for about ten percent of your full plan. So your full plan right now is running at about eight million dollars a year, and so as the fixed costs that we've seen thus far, you know, basically, it saves you about ten percent overall. And the significance is those are fixed dollars, guaranteed spent out the door costs, so that's where our primary focus is on. The other idea behind this, obviously, is the fixed cost. The co-op retains the reserve that they may or may not receive from overfunding your plan. In a self-insured model, the district would retain those reserves and use them towards your own plan, so basically, a hundred percent of any reserves that you retain get to go back into your own plan, whereas under the co-op, that may not be the case. Your projected renewal costs, obviously, we'd be looking, we're looking at this because of the overall costs to the district and the staff. Basically, as the projections sit right now, we're looking at a zero percent increase this year, a zero percent increase next year, and then as well as a worst-case scenario, similar to what you have with the co-op, of five percent next year. So really, it's an opportunity to walk into self-insure with very little risk. As it relates to the employees, obviously, making sure that we can keep everything compatible, we would be matching the plan designs identically, we would be matching the provider networks to the best of Preferred One's ability, as well as the prescription drugs, which is very important, so that would be matched. And then basically, the other side of the coin is, as being self-insured, we get extremely more updated and in-depth claims reporting. With that, the insurance committee and any advisory board would have the ability to now make educated plan design changes that would truly affect the cost, so that's an enhancement, and another reason why a lot of districts go self-insured. So all in all, the district is in a good situation to move to a self-insured model.
Dr. Grover, my name is Mike Thielen, I'm a senior sales director with Preferred One, and I would just say that we've had tremendous success with other districts that have decided to go self-insured, giving them the flexibility, the ability to save dollars and move forward and have more control of where their dollars are being spent, and seeing good information when it comes to where their dollars are being spent. To name a few, Bloomington Schools, Robinsdale, Minnetonka, Wayzetta, Hopkins, yes, larger districts, but you're certainly of size, that that could work very, very comfortably for you, and Preferred One would very much enjoy the opportunity to work with you and your district members. Thank you.
One of the questions that we have is that, as of July one, we would need to make this change, and Preferred One has done a really nice job of assuring us that they would be able to help us in this transition, to make sure that everyone received their ID cards on time before July one, and that we would be able to make this conversion as seamless as possible. Another thought is that we would be creating a separate bank account for our health insurance program, it would be self-insured, that money would be separate from our district's, other district funds, and that money of which we save would stay in that fund and would be, only be used for our health insurance for our employees in the district.
Any questions? Mike?
You know, I know in, at least the conversation we had in the finance committee, and then briefly, this earlier today in the workshop, you know, we talked about, obviously, the upside in terms of the ability to save money if we have claims that come in lower, and then, you know, it was brought up, you know, well, what happens if we go over, and we do have the catastrophic coverage, I know. Have we done the analysis, though, to say, let's look back over the last ten years to find out, year over year, where we actually incurred our actual expenses versus what the projected was? Because I think that would help put some people at ease to say, you know, if eight out of the ten years, we actually did better than otherwise, because I think that's probably one of, you know, and I know there's others, but I think that's probably one of the biggest concerns out there is, you know, we go ahead and do this, and we have a high risk of, you know, exceeding what we're projecting to spend.
The one thing that we do have is the savings of a fixed cost that are going forward from, by moving to self-insured, and that's, that's an additional ten percent over what we are saving as our reserves. So in one year, where most districts are able, when they go to self-insured, they build that in as their movement going forward, we're able to not only build it in and not increase our rates, but also save that additional eight hundred thousand dollars. So it significantly reduces the risk that Prairie Lake's average school district has moving forward. So I think that we, that part of it should make people feel a little bit more comfortable that we're able to do that in one year. And also, I think we have looked back, I haven't done a thorough study of the past ten years, but I know that we have had one year in the past five years that we had an increase, that they've adjusted our, some of our programs, our offerings, and to do, to reduce our rates. But I will go back and look through those past ten years.
I think that would help, I think, you know, for us to be able to see.
But I will adjust that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to reiterate, we had a previous presentation earlier, and the thing I'm intrigued about is the real-time data, or the monthly, quarterly data that we'll be getting, and be able to share that with our teachers and with the public, if we wish, some of the data, but it'll help us really make data-driven decisions, so.
Yes. I think one other thing that I should, if we are able to do this and they have a normal year, and for two years, in our second year of our, in 2011, 12-13, 2012-13, if we were able to save that five percent on our health insurance and stay at a zero, that's about a three hundred and forty thousand dollars savings to the district. And when, and looking at that we're not receiving any new funding from the state, or any new way of bringing in additional revenue, this is a really good way to still offer the plans that we currently have, and to not, the potential for not increasing that in year two is really high. I'm not going to say that we can't have a catastrophic year, because we could, but the chances of that happening are less than four percent. I would say it's closer to one percent. And so in year two, where we would have to spend about three hundred and forty thousand dollars in increasing our premiums and our health insurance costs, that is a savings, immediate savings in that year.
Any other comments?
I just, I didn't want to, you know, kind of along the lines that you brought, Rich, you know, the other option or possibility that I like is, we again talked a little bit about the wellness aspect, that, you know, I think that's one of the biggest things that you hear about the healthcare industry in general, is trying to put more control in each of our individual hands to understand, when I make a decision, what is the true cost impact? And so I'm excited about down the road, us having the opportunity to take some of these funds, if we have good experience, and really incent all of our employees to make better decisions, both in terms of, do I need to go to the doctor for the sniffles, or can I wait it out? But more importantly, what are the more proactive things that we can do to really incent and motivate, you know, good, healthy lifestyle choices? So I think that's a real intriguing thing that presents itself more, I think, in this option possibly, from what I've heard, as opposed to, you know, being part of the co-op that we've had today.
Some of the tools that we're able to access, even in terms of costs, and nurse lines, and those types of things that we're able to access by going this route, I think will move us in that direction.
So again, I mean, you know, first and foremost, and I think we've said, you know, we want to make sure that the plan and the choices available to our employees doesn't change. doesn't change at all. And I think more importantly, down the road, if we can make it even better because of some of these things, I think hopefully that would be a real positive in the longer run.
And I also agree with what Mike and Rich are saying. This is really an opportunity for us to capture some funds that we wouldn't be able to otherwise while offering the same quality of program to all of our employees and maximizing opportunities to even enhance it in the future. So these are terrific opportunities, so thank you to both Al and Mike and Julie, all of you actually, for working on this together and bringing it forward with Matt, to give this an opportunity for our district to look at it. So tonight, we're listening to it, we're learning. Continued information sessions will be held, and then we'll have it back for a vote on June 1st next week.
You took the words out of my mouth.
You did.
That's fine. Thanks, Julie, you have one more, or two more?
I do. Meal prices for 2011 and 12. We have, I've had a discussion and an opportunity to talk to Jean Winters about our food service prices for our meals for next year, and we really believe that we can continue to offer our meal prices at the same prices that they are currently. And we do have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund balance currently in that fund. And we do anticipate we'll spend that down a little bit, but we'll be no lower than about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we feel very comfortable with that number. We feel it's adequate for moving forward without having to increase our food prices.
Do I have a motion to accept the meal prices for 2011-12?
I'm with her.
Todd, second. Stacy, any comments or questions?
No, the fund that's about at three fifty, that's set aside, so if you, for any equipment improvement or replacement or whatever, and that's what that's...
We do have that available. We also budget about forty thousand dollars for equipment replacement. I did have a chance to talk to Jean again today about that, and we feel that over the years, we have been replacing those outdated equipment pieces that may be outdated or no longer work. We do have a repair budget also built into our budget for next year, and so we feel very comfortable with where we're at.
Any other questions?
And I know you didn't, I mean, these are separate funds also from our general fund, so when you talk about that we have a balance there, we can't move that three hundred and fifty thousand to help pay for other things, and I think that's really important for people to understand. And really, the balance came about over time because of the cost of the meals, right? So, I mean, essentially, maybe whittling it down is just the kids and adults that have paid in over the past several years are now getting the other side, right?
Being efficient in how we're offering our program also.
But I, you know, I do know that sometimes people think that, well, why can't we take, you know, this extra money that we have here and spend it somewhere else? And we legally cannot do that, and I think that's important for people to know.
This is fund two, which is specific for our food service program, that we cannot move that into the general fund or use it for purposes other than food service.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. And food service vendors?
This year, we went out for RFPs for our prime food service vendor. We did receive four responses to our RFP. U.S. Food Service, Indian Head Food Service, Upper Lakes Foods, and Apres Food Service. Reviewing them, many of them now because of the prices of the fuel, do have a fuel surcharge, but each of them is a little bit unique in how they're offering it. And so in order to compare them apples to apples, we took a date and time, the week of five-nine and the week of five-two, to say what was the price of diesel fuel, so that we could determine exactly what the best prices were. And we also looked at if prices were to go down or to go up, how does that fluctuate between our four vendors? And looking at overall, U.S. Food Service did come out best when reviewing it based on those two dates, and also they have the least amount of increments, or the smallest increments, so we get savings when it goes down. And a small amount of increases as it goes up, there's not huge jumps. And so we just, they did come out the best overall for U.S. Food Service. So our recommendation from Jean and myself is that the Board approve U.S. Food Service. It's our prime vendor.
Do I have a motion to accept U.S. Food Service as our prime service, our food service prime vendor?
I'm in that motion.
By Tom, second.
I'll second it.
By Rich. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to middle school pilots.
Good evening, Chair Schimmick, School Board, Dr. Gruber. Before you, we have a proposal to help ease congestion at the middle schools in regards to traffic between school buses and parents. The map shows that we would propose an optional, and I can't stress that enough, optional parent drop at Westwood parking lot, the east parking lot, have a bus waiting, take up any children that are on the bus up to the middle schools to eliminate car traffic at the middle school sites. This would be no cost to the district. We would use an existing bus to help ease that congestion. The advantage of the Westwood lot is that Westwood is a third-tier school, and middle school is obviously our first tier, so we could probably handle that pretty well. So I'm looking for permission from the school board to try this option after Labor Day, or I'm sorry, Memorial Day, with some communication to middle school staff, parents, and families. Are there any questions?
I'll take a motion first. Is there a motion to approve a middle school pilot to reduce congestion of cars to middle schools? By Stacy, second.
I'll second it.
By Mike. Questions?
This will be just from the day after Memorial Day until the end of the school year.
As a trial. Correct, for this year. And we will evaluate the results after that.
And there is no overlap between these buses and then elementary starting? Is that correct?
No, there, we, no, there's no overlap on the busing. There will be possibly...
Or, I should, excuse me, no overlap in the traffic?
We will have to be mindful and careful of kids company traffic at Westwood.
Okay.
Rich? And it's a full-size bus that'll be picking up at Westwood?
That's correct. If we need to, we'll find another.
And then which lot at Hidden Oaks will they go in? Will they drop in the front of the school or will they be on the side like?
It will be determined either Twin Oaks or Hidden Oaks, depending on the bus.
Okay, and they'll come out County Road 44 then and come up that way, or they will, will they go to the north?
Yes, they'll come out Westwood on 44 and then come up Fish Point to the middle schools.
And this is an optional?
Optional.
And the study is just for the morning?
For the morning. It's where we have the most congestion, parent drop.
Okay. And any input from the parents at all?
We've had a couple of rumblings out there, and once we clarified that it's optional, it's gone a little better. It's, I realize it's going to be inconvenient for some people because it's, if parents are driving past Westwood or past the middle schools, go to Westwood, it's out of their way, but for safety improvement, I think it's a good model.
Yeah, I mean, I think the intent, Jim, is even if you get 10 cars that aren't going through, that's 10 less that are, you know, at the peak time of the buses coming in and everything, right?
That's correct.
And I think also the, this bus will be treated just like any of the others in terms of it'll have a slot, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So it'll be just like all the others that are coming in at either Twin Oaks or Hidden, wherever it fits, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Then if I can continue to ask, have you looked at any other, oh, sorry.
I take Stacy first.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Jim, can you just maybe talk a little bit about, I know some other strategies have been tried here, like right turnout of hidden, I'm a parent that does this quite frequently, so I'm pretty familiar with it, but I don't, I guess I'd just like to talk a little bit, have you talk a little bit about what some of the issues are?
Sure. Up until a couple of years ago, we would have buses stop at Hidden Oaks and Twin Oaks respectively, drop off the children that were at that school, then the buses would flip sites, and that was, that was a nightmare. It actually kept me out that night. So we devised the plan a couple of years ago was to have the buses stop at one school each, and the kids would go back and forth. It's still not ideal, but I think it's a safer alternative, what we have. Problem we have, again, is parent traffic or any traffic, and we tried to have traffic come out, take right turns only, and that works. The problem is not everybody does it.
Most people don't, to be honest.
Right. And if you have middle school children and you've been up there, it's a, it's a ordeal.
It's scary.
Any other comments?
So the bus driver is the lone supervisor at the student drop-off for loading the bus besides, I guess, the parent?
That's correct. We don't supervise any bus stops anywhere out in towns. We treat this one the same.
When you're done at the end of the school year, will you be asking for parent feedback and can you come back with some kind of report as to how it went and if there's any other options?
Yes, we also are, will be a transportation survey to all parents, and we're going to try to tie this into that as well.
Okay. I know in the past, we've tried, we've talked to the city of Prior Lake about trying to get some other options there, as going so far as stopping traffic for that hour in the morning and the hour in the afternoon, and that hasn't ever gone anywhere. I don't know if there's, you know, if we can keep asking, because it is, it's a dangerous area. And I would agree, I'm glad you're trying something, you know, I guess we'll see how this works, but...
Yeah, we could, we can ask again. I've asked three times and it's been all the same.
Jim, oh, I just have one more. As far as the drop-off, I mean, I guess I would be interested, I don't know how we capture this information, but who is actually getting dropped off? Is it walkers? I mean, I don't see a lot of kids walking. I see some, but I, just the percentage of who's getting, is it walkers that would be, you know, not bust, or do we know how to?
There, we also have a lot of carpoolers from different parts of the city who feel that the buses are over full, and we're at capacity, and that's uncomfortable for a lot of kids, they'd rather have a ride. And that's really our target.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Lee brought up my point, I guess, on working with the city of Prior Lake and maybe redesigning or restriping or resigning that Fish Point Road in the future when we come back with your study results, I think, if we could get that information.
But we'd have to recognize too that the traffic that we're talking about is the same people who want to drop their kids off at school. That's most of the traffic we're talking about. So if we block the parents from coming in there, we have to be prepared for that.
Better that than having a child hit, and I've watched that almost happen more than once.
I agree.
Yeah, you know, but again, I mean, you know, Stacy now on the transportation committee and Diana, I mean, you know, we've talked about this multiple times and, you know, so far, the city just has not seemed to want to be able to help us with this. And, you know, I know they have in many other places. I think they're just concerned about that isn't through road, unfortunately, and there are many families who live to the south of County Road 44 that use Fish Point to get to County Road 13 in the morning, if even without middle schoolers, that that's their shortest way. And, you know, so I guess that's the city's perspective is, you know, at a time in the morning when, yes, we're dropping off kids, it's also a time in the morning when moms and dads that are working are trying to get to work, and so, you know, that's their trade off. And, you know, so I think, you know, again, it doesn't hurt to ask again, we'll try, but I know that's been the common reply back, so...
And we do effectively stop traffic with, across the guard now at the intersection while the kids are crossing.
Okay. I think we have a motion and a second. There are no other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next on our agenda is a change of our next board meeting. We're actually scheduled for June 13. That turns out to be the same day as the Fong's Golf Tournament. And the Fong's Golf Tournament, we benefit from the profits from that tournament in our school district, and we are suggesting that if possible, we could change that meeting to, in order for many of us to attend, actually, the tournament or the dinner afterward, if we could change our meeting to June 1st at 5:00 and cancel the June 13th meeting. Suzanne, did you want to add anything to that?
Just that we had talked about having a June 1st meeting to make a decision on our insurance as a district, and we were just going to open it just for that one issue. I think if we can collapse some of the items for June 13th, we could add a few more to that June 1st meeting, and then if needed, move the other pieces to June 27, June 26th board meeting. So we would still have two meetings in June, one would be June 21st, and then the next one would be the June 1st, and the second one would be June 27, isn't it?
Yeah.
This is 27. It's a Monday night for 27. I know that...
That fourth Monday.
That's for sure. And so that's before the board this evening. And then, well, first of all, there's that, and then to talk about 2012 in addition to that.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments, or is that a possibility that we can do this?
What time is the meeting? Would it be?
It would start at 5:00. And the intention would be, it would be a shorter meeting to be done early enough for other conflicts.
We would have it livestreamed, as we have our other board meetings, and we would move the Laker Pride to June 27, and there would not be a Laker showcase that evening. So it'd be a very concise and short meeting, perhaps done within an hour. I know Mike has another commitment at 6:00, so we would try to, Eric and I have worked, looked at the, pre-looked at the agenda and believe that we could get it done within close to an hour on June 1st. That way, our school board members, as well as our administrative staff, would have an opportunity to participate in either the, either the golf tournament itself, which is that June 13, or the dinner certainly in the evening, where the event is held, where Leo and Cindy Lee are graciously give the profits from that tournament, either to, part of it comes to us for our activities, for those students that can't afford it, and then part of it goes to St. Mike's, and then the other part of it goes to the Vietnam Orphans, and there's a foundation that Leo and Cindy work with there. So we are a beneficiary of this ninth annual Fong's Golf Tournament, and we'd love to be able to participate for it.
Did you have a question? Yep.
Okay, sure. We'll make it, we'll get it, we'll have to shorten that one. I think that's possible, isn't it? At the meeting for meeting, or we'll have them double?
You know, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
And then discussion about June 11th, assuming that's when the tournament is in 2012?
Wondering if we could just look at your calendars for 2012 and maybe move that so we don't have this conflict next year, to clear your calendar right now for June 11th, 2012, with the 10th Annual Fong's Golf Tournament and dinner, and we would have our board meeting on June 5th of that month.
The 5th or the 4th?
Which is a Monday.
I would think the Monday would be the 4th.
Monday would be the 4th, and that's when it would be, excuse me. That's right.
And so that would be kind of the plan then for years going forward, is the 1st and 4th Mondays of June?
Yes, the 1st and 4th Mondays of June.
And actually, because I think in May typically we do the 1st and 3rd due to Memorial Day, so we still would have a two-week window there, right? So...
I don't believe we need to vote on this. I think it's just discussion, right?
We need to vote for the change, correct?
You want to vote for the change?
I don't.
I don't think we need to.
I think that's just at the...
Sure.
And all the appropriate notifications will go out. Martha will take care of that. Okay, moving on to policy. We have our second final reading on two policies. First, two, employee use of social media and student use of information technology, and we'll start with employee use of social media.
I'll start, kick it off here, and then we'll... Um, I'll start it, kick it off here, and then, uh, we'll have Christie come up and talk about a change that's been made. You have a paper copy of the changes that have been made as a result of input from, um, um, Chair Pratt, um, about making sure that we have that parental consent put in, put into the document itself, so that parents would know. So Christie's gonna talk you through the, uh, employee use of social media, and then also the student use of information technology, which is the companion piece to this. So there's actually two policies before you.
Good evening. To make it a little simpler for you, put it in red, um, the edits that were just freshly made, um, for your review. That is something that was, um, talked about in Technology and in Policy Committee, about how do we handle, um, student photos in the context of social media, um, just because it felt a little different than directory information and use of student photos as outlined in directory information for the website. This is more of, uh, website two-point-oh, a little bit new, um, for parents, in the sense of how we're gonna be using it in an educational setting. So we thought, um, asking parent permission, um, to use photos, um, and identification might be appropriate, um, but we also wanted to make sure that that was, um, you know, easy for teachers and parents to, um, um, approve or not give their consent to, so we put it in, um, we, first, we put it in this, uh, employee use of social media on that first page under three A in red, where, um, so staff can see that they will need to make sure that there is, um, parental permission, um, in order to use the photos, and, um, parents can go to five twenty-four, student use of information technology, and we put, um, that consent within the acceptable use, um, parental consent letter, so there'd be, um, not only signing for, um, agreement of, uh, the way information technology is being used in social media, but also, um, giving permission for the use of photos all in one place. And so that was the, the major change there. Um, Rich, I think you also wanted us to add the definition of social media to five twenty-four, which we put in there, too. That was a good catch. So if you have any other questions or concerns about that?
There any questions for policy?
Just a legal one. The policy in the agenda here, do we have to change the motion since we're putting paper copies versus the one that's on the inner agenda?
It would just be the amended, we'd have to, uh-
Okay, just so we designate that-
No, uh, Martha says no, it's, no, because we have the paper copy, we can go with this one.
Okay, thank you.
So Christie, just from a, um, uh, logistics aspect, will the teachers then, I mean, when, when parents fill this out, will there be a list provided to the teachers, or easy access, so that they can quickly see that John Smith does have permission, but, but Jane Doe doesn't?
What I would do is bring this to our admin meeting to make principals aware of it. I'm not sure what the protocols are now with our current, um, student use of information technology, because right now, I know that they do have to have this permission slip, um, signed and checked off on, so this would, they would need to make sure.
Yeah, 'cause most of the vehicles that we use right now, I think there's a, um, if, for lack of a better way, a gatekeeper, right? With, it's a newsletter, whatever, that probably has direct access. Um, I'm not against the teachers being able to do this, but I'm concerned that somebody could inadvertently violate a parent's wishes unknowingly, which I think would expose us to some, some liability potentially, um-
Uh, maybe we could ask the principals, how, how it actually works right now?
The use of technology? Who has a microphone, does anyone? No? Uh, would one of you come up? Caroline, Caroline stepping to the plate here.
Yep, um, students are required to sign that at the beginning of the year prior to getting their access codes, and I know we, at all of the schools, have been talking about how can we get that so they know all that information? We teach them all of those rules and guidelines for them to use the technology appropriately, and then we do require that in order for them to be able to log on to the system, um, you know, so it does take us probably a week or so in the beginning of the year to get that information, but then if they do not have that, they do not get access to their login code.
And I understand, it's, it's the parent parental permission for the use of the picture and the identification, I think that's the one where we're kind of starting to get into some, some area. Again, I, I'm okay with it, but I just want to make sure that we don't have, you know, the seventh grade science teacher posting something that inadvertently identifies a student whose parents did not want them to be included, and, um, so that's, that's what I'm just curious about, how the logistical, uh, management of this will be.
What we have with that information is in our office, the list of students that have that piece, and specifically the ones that do not want that, and so, you know, do our best to make sure that that's known to our teachers, and also evaluating what's out there, what teachers are posting.
'Cause I know for those families that choose not to, they're, it, it's pretty black and white, I mean, I know they can be pretty, a, a, and that's their right, I, you know, so I don't want to violate that, that right that they have.
Absolutely.
And Patrick, did you have something?
Well, I just was gonna add to that, you know, from an elementary perspective, we know exactly who those students are, it's very few at the elementary level, at least at Greenwood. So, the people that are gonna be doing those types of things have been informed of that information, we know to kind of keep that sacred.
Yep.
Do the best that we can to communicate that.
Yep, great, appreciate it.
Any other question, questions?
Okay, thank you for your input, and thanks for redoing some of this, Christie. I guess I need a motion to, uh, approve both policies four twenty-eight and five twenty-four.
So move.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Todd? Any other comments or questions?
I would just say that we, we said at the very beginning, this is our first effort at a social media policy. I can promise you, it will come back for revisions, based on our experiences into the two thousand eleven-twelve school year, um, so we will, we believe that this has the very best efforts, uh, that we can put into it, we've tried to think of everything, uh, and certainly we have, something new will be, uh, on the cusp of being invented, and we'll have to address it at a later time, but at least it's a beginning place, and a, a place for us to begin to address the use of social media in the educational setting.
There's no other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Administrative reports, Suzanne?
Yes, are you gonna talk about C?
No, go ahead, you go ahead.
Um, on Friday, um, Stacy Rell and I, uh, attended the C, the Schools for Equity and Education meeting. Um, we were able to hear our state economists and, and state demographer speak about the future of the next five to seven years, um, and certainly, it isn't a, a pretty picture as we go through the rest of the recession and begin to climb out of it at a very slow rate, but certainly, they talk about the new normal, which we've talked about, uh, at the board table many times, and there are, our ability to look at what we're doing in different ways, and to make sure that we're being, uh, as creative as possible as we look to the future of our funding, uh, and certainly, that has been upheld, uh, this week and today, or by tonight at midnight, that our legislature is not going to be resolving the budget issues, nothing's going to be signed, uh, passed or signed by the governor, and we're not sure yet when those special sessions will begin. Uh, it's, the, the estimates are that it probably won't be until late June at the earliest, which means that, you know, we could have lots of press on this, and lots of media on this topic over, of course, the next several weeks. Certainly, there's, uh, going to be small sessions, and, uh, the governor meeting, and in his group with the different committees, but it's going to be a while before there's any resolution, everyone seems to be dug in pretty deeply. So, uh, just to remind you that in nineteen eighty-one, we had five different special sessions, uh, before the deadlock between Governor Quee and the legislature was broken, and the final end didn't come till October. Now, I'm not predicting that dire of a circumstance, I'm hoping that we have, uh, legislators that are going to work very diligently to make this happen, and meet compromise with the governor, and that we will have, uh, a completed session, hopefully before the end of June, if not early July. But, uh, that is the status of where we are right now, so, uh, I just wanted you to know about that. On Saturday, I had the, uh, the fun of participating in the city of Prior Lake Strategic Planning Process, along with Leigh Anne Wyreck and Eric Rodine. Uh, we represented the district, uh, in a full-day session that the city of Prior Lake, um, put on at Club Prior, uh, using our computers, I might add, I would lend them a bank of computers, uh, uh, mobile computers, um, that they could, uh, use to help go through that process, and it was a very in-depth one. We had, uh, people of all ages, residents of, of the city of Prior Lake, come together, there had to be between eighty and a hundred people, I'm thinking by the number of tables and computers that were there, uh, all working diligently to help define that vision twenty-thirty, or to redefine that vision twenty-thirty, and how it's changed over the course of the last two years. So that was a very positive day spent, um, with the city of Prior Lake. Um, we are in the process of replacing our Jeckers Pond Elementary Principal, and hopefully we'll have a, uh, a name coming forward for you, uh, at one of our June board meetings. Uh, it could be as early as June first, or it could be at our second meeting. And as I mentioned, I think at our last meeting, I did represent, uh, the superintendents, uh, at our scale presentation on the Minnesota Student Survey results, um, Leigh was there, and Eric, uh, along with my colleagues from Belle Plaine and from Jordan, um, gave kind of an overview of, of the Scott Connan results of the Minnesota Student Survey, and was very proud to be able to use a, a part of the video that was produced by our district employees, Eric Service being at the forefront of that, um, that is available on our website. So for anyone, um, watching that would like to see those results, and what that meant for Prior Lake students, and for our families, and for our future, that's available on our website. And that is all I have tonight.
Thank you. Are there any administrative reports? Okay, uh, board reports?
I have one. Um, we had the, the Community Education Service Advisory Council meet this last, uh, week, and, um, I think the big highlight, uh, coming out was that the new catalog was out for the youth programs this summer, um, so I would encourage everyone to take a peek there, there's, um, a wide variety of different classes, um, and camps and things, um, coming out of the program, and, and it's pretty exciting. Um, and then, the second thing of note, which I know we honored Becky, uh, last meeting, but we will be, 'cause she's retiring, um, from the Kids Company Coordinator, and so I'll be, um, part of the transition, um, interview group in the next few weeks, and looking at criteria for hiring that position, it's a pretty key part of the district, um, for the Kids Company, so.
Any other reports? Dan?
Might as well speak since I'm going away, I guess, uh-
Dan, this isn't your last meeting?
Yes.
No, it was one of June first, and so you have to pick the sticker pack and leave your nameplate.
I can't take my nameplate, yeah. All right, we, uh, had, we tried to have our, uh, outdoor movie the past two weekends, but unfortunately, we're unable to, um, it's always, uh, I think weather always gets us for our, uh, outdoor events, and so, uh, it was kind of a disappointment, but, uh, there was a lot of work that went into it, so I have to thank everyone that helped and, uh, put work into it for that. We did, you know, unbelievable amount of advertisements for it, um, our, uh, we had, uh, our graphic des, a graphic design class made a whole lot of, uh, different advertisements that were just, they blew my mind on Ford, just the movie Dispensable Me, um, and we put those all throughout the school, we had, um, a lot of announcements go out to all the schools, inviting all the schools, um, and then also, Mayor wrote a fantastic article, um, not only on our council this past year, but also, uh, for our outdoor movies, so we really put the word out, and I'm guessing we probably would've had an unbelievable amount of people show up, had the weather been nice, but it wasn't, but obviously, opens a window for, um, some great things to happen next year with that event. Uh, also, I guess, since I got this award, I wanted to thank, uh, and I still got my one left, but I guess I might as well say it now, um, I wanted to thank everyone for this experience, uh, I don't know if I was really the, uh, best candidate to be the student voice here at the meetings, but I was given the opportunity, and, uh, it's been a great experience, I've had a lot of learning experiences through this, um, I want to thank everyone in here, um, because it's great to see the process that goes through, um, your ultimate goal, which is improving the student learning experience and student experience here at Prior Lake High School, um, uh, through the board, I've gotten to learn diplomatic processes, and take everything that you say here and bring it back to the high school, and anything that includes the high school, and inform them, or whoever wants to listen to me, I guess, about what's going on here and what they're doing, and improve it, but also to the middle schools and the elementary schools through the showcases and Laker prides, and also, I came to a workshop once, um, got to see what you're doing, uh, to improve your schools, and I can tell you, um, being a student, uh, I've been here since kindergarten in Prior Lake, uh, schools, uh, I only took the tests and went through the classes, but I didn't know that there was so much work in analyzing data, and doing different things to just improve this district as a whole, and I think, uh, I, you know, I'm leaving this year at the end of the year, uh, but it's good to know that the Prior Lake School District is in such good hands.
And what are you gonna be doing?
Uh, I'm attending DeSavos Adolphus College, uh, in the fall next year.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck, you've been a great addition to the board.
Yes.
Any others? Go ahead.
Um, just about the end, I have to thank him again, and I remember when we were talking about the, uh, hybrid learning courses, uh, and the impact they might have on students, you were actually taking one of those courses. So there were several times throughout, throughout the year where you added your input that was helpful to us, as, uh, as, as we have these conversations, to have a student voice was, was really great, even about the water. The recite, we recite, uh, the, um, water fountain that you put in as student council. I had the pleasure of attending a student council meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago, to congratulate them on their award they've received at the state level, so, again, congratulations, and if you can make it next week, we'd love to have you at, at your last board meeting.
Better bring your nameplate, Matt. Okay, if there are no other reports, future events, May thirtieth is no school, it's Memorial Day, June first now will be our board meeting, our next board meeting, at five o'clock, it says five thirty, but it's five o'clock. Um, June sixth is Senior Awards Night at the high school, June ninth is the last day of school, and June tenth is commencement at Dan Patch Stadium at seven thirty. I think, um, Karen Barkley is assuming that all of you are going to be there, if you're not, if you'd let her know, um, she would appreciate it, and the June thirteenth meeting is now canceled. Um, if there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
By Mike, second by Todd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero, we're adjourned.